Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Rockland School Committee Meeting of Monday, May 22, 2017. We've got a busy agenda and a packed house full of a lot of smiling faces we're looking forward to see this evening. First on tonight's agenda, we have two sets of minutes to approve. One from the meeting of April 10, 2017, and meeting minutes of May 8, 2017.
Two votes?
Two seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Two votes, thank you very much. Seeing nothing under communications. But we've got some wonderful-looking young folks here under audience. And first of all, we have the RMS Scholar Leader Program with Lily Reel and Colin Rogers, Dr. Crohn, is that right?
Yes. I would like to invite Miss Bond.
You're feeling a lot of pressure going first. Don't forget your momma.
It's exciting though to see all these elementary people that we can't wait to bring up to the middle school, so that's pretty exciting. Let me introduce you Colin Rogers and Lily Reel, who are two of RMS's finest. They were nominated by our teachers and administration to be Rogers Middle School Scholar Leaders. And we all went to Marlboro last Wednesday night, first night of Celtics, right? According to Lily's dad. We all went to the great dinner and presentation. They received an award. And scholar leader, in a very simple explanation, is the best of the best. They are smart, they are leaders, they are members of our community that we really could not do without. So I'm thrilled to have them here tonight and have them recognized. This is Lily Reel.
Excellent. Make sure I get the right one. Okay, let's start with Lily, ladies before gentlemen. Miss Bond just ran away. This certificate is awarded for the selection in the New England League of Middle Schools Scholar Leader Program. Congratulations, Lily.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And Colin. Says the same, it's awarded for selection in the New England League of Middle Schools Scholar Leader Program. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
Gentlemen? What did you have for dinner last week? It sounds like it was interesting. Did you enjoy it?
It was, I think it was baked chicken with mashed potatoes and stuffing. It was really good.
Nice chocolate cake.
Nice chocolate cake.
I just want to say, this was one of my proud moments, that I can say how proud I am to be the uncle of Lily Reel.
Lily, I know your dad would be pleased to know he didn't miss anything with that Celtics game, let's be honest, right? Great job, I know he's very proud of you. And we are proud of both of you. Any comments from you guys, any of you that you want to tell us?
Congratulations, guys.
Well, there was over like 100 kids there, so it was good to represent Rockland Middle School.
Great, awesome, awesome.
Congratulations.
Great job. Congratulations. Thank you. Up next, we have an ELL presentation. Dr. Crohn?
Yes.
I'm first going to introduce the ELL department via our slide presentation. It's a short one. We'll keep it short and sweet. So, our department consists of Linda Miniglia, our director, who's over there in the wings, myself, my name's Rachel Zalaka. This year I'm working at the middle school and high school. And we have Michelle Bauer at Esten in Memorial Park, Sonia Vaz at Esten in Jefferson. And then we have two ELL students with us, Leonardo da Silva, senior, and Luani da Silva, and she is a junior here at Rockland High. We also have some other members who are not here tonight. We have Nia Callahan, I think her name got kind of pushed, but she is our translator and family liaison. And we also have some support in the way of volunteers that come, faithful volunteers that come to help support the program and our students. So, just quickly, I just want to show that we've grown in numbers with our ELL students. And we've tripled in the past few years in terms of our student population. Most of our students are from Brazil, but not all. We have a few, as it says up there, from various countries. Okay, and just a snapshot of a chart that we use through the WIDA Consortium, which Massachusetts is part of this for our ELL population. This is where we get our state standards from and how we level our students. Most of, well, all of our students fall in between entering level to level five. If they've reached a level five, then they're exited out of the program. And we evaluate them based on these categories: linguistic complexity, vocabulary usage, and language control. This is just a basic snapshot. Okay, so, next we have just a short video, it's under five minutes, of a few students from elementary through high school being interviewed. And then we have an actual classroom shot for one part of the video. So, we can do that now.
Tell me, when you first came here, what was your experience like? You came last year, right?
Yeah. Seventh grade? Yeah. So, when I come here, I was, the first time, I was confused because I come, like, I have crazy odd hours and stuff like that, make me tired and angry all the time. And God, English, oh, that's make me more angry than normal. So, I was frustrated, I was scared, I was afraid.
Why were you angry and frustrated?
More because I was a good student in Brazil. So, they have like Olympics, Math Olympics in Brazil, and I got a third place. And when I come here, I got an F in math, so it's not, it's not like...
So, you're...
Yeah. So, it's kind of bad for me, got an F or something like that. And all the things that I have because of my English, I know that because this year going to be better.
Do you feel like you're having more success this year in your classes?
Yeah, yeah. So, I got like, I got more in the English, I learn more, I learn more math, I learn more like talking, asking questions, I am not afraid anymore. And now I got in full text, so it's kind of awesome.
Congratulations. Doing well. Do you have any problems in any classes?
No, I don't have any problems with my classes. The only things I need to learn more is like a couple of hard words, like, I don't know, developments.
Natalia, does he like things of the new world?
No, because he doesn't like materials, things.
Luis, does he use voodoo to help people or not? Tell me, what do you think that?
Voodoo is black magic.
All right. Douglas, was he happy to everything changing around his village?
Nope.
Tell me, what do you think that?
Because he likes, he has strong set feelings about these things, and he doesn't like the Chinese.
Natalia, do you think it's legal to someone buy and destroy a graveyard?
No. A place, important place.
Did you like when you came to Rockland?
I was liking, like, my friends.
What do you like about coming to ESL class with me?
Good.
You like it? What's your favorite part?
To do the project.
What did you like about the project?
To make the joke.
Yeah? You liked learning about Duquesne's? Do you think your English has gotten better?
Yes.
This year? What was it like when you first started school in Rockland?
When I started school in Rockland, I didn't know anyone, but suddenly Ashley came up and then talked to me. Then we became friends. So, suddenly Anna was actually friends with Ashley. Then we all became friends. So, those, Ashley and Anna were the first person I ever met.
How has ESL class helped you?
ESL class helped me by my English, because when I got here, I didn't know a lot of English. So, I needed more practice. And every time I came here, I keep getting better and better at English more.
What grade did you start school here?
Second grade.
And what grade are you in now?
Third grade.
Do you find anything difficult in the classroom?
The thing that I find difficult in my class is my reading, because every time I read a book, I have to read it again and again to understand the book.
What do you like about ESL class?
The thing I like about ESL class is that I can work, I can work here and get better and go on for like my teamwork with friends.
Now we have five students here, and they are going to speak a little bit about their experiences. So, first we'll start with Leonardo. And if you could just tell us what it was like when you first came here? The good, the bad, everything?
Okay. It's been two years that I've been here in the United States. And it's kind of crazy, because you decided to change your life completely. Like, you're moving to a new country. You don't have any expectation. You're just like, I'm going with that and I'm going to try to be me and do my best. So, one of the first things that you need to have is the English, of course, so you can survive, you can do all the things that you need. I came to the United States with the level of English like four. It's a good level. It helped me a lot, so.
When you started, what's the difference between when you started and now?
It's a big difference. I can tell. For example, I'm going to talk about my ESL experience. So, oh my gosh. I'm glad that Rockland offered to immigrant students the ESL classes, because we don't feel comfortable, we don't feel like confident to go out there and speak English. So, the ESL class help us, to prepare us to go out there and speak. We feel more confident. We learn how to understand each other, understand different cultures. We are, for example, our classes is like a lot of Brazilian. So, most of the people in there are from different states. So, we learn how to deal with different kind of people, and that's the good thing about that. We become more, we have more empathy for the others.
What about your classes? What did you start now, this year, than doing in the beginning?
So, I left ESL class last year, so I'm not in the ESL class anymore. But I could see that I'm a strong student, because I went from the ESL class to American Studies, and today I'm in the AP class for English. And it helped me a lot, I can see the difference, yeah.
And, do you want to... This is Luani da Silva. Can you tell us about what your experience was, your challenges, and what your experiences were?
When I first got here, I didn't know any English. I don't know, I didn't know how to say hi, how are you? So, I just came and sit on the class. And the ESL class is really good, because when you came, we don't have friends, like, we don't have anything, anyone, just you and in the school. So, the ESL class helped you to speak English and learn English and make friends, like, friends who, like, when you, I mean, friends that helped you and...
Common experience?
Yeah, and people who speak your language, because when we came here, we want a new education, a better education, to go back and be good in the life or do a college. And that's, I think so.
And I have to say, she went from speaking no English to being an excellent student, learning, she's learned a lot, and you have like mostly As and Bs, right?
Yeah.
She's doing very well.
And one thing that I really want to tell that, I'm sad that ESL doesn't have a class in high school. We have to divide the class, like, how many students?
Oh, wow, it's very, throughout the year, but seventeen?
Yeah, seventeen students and different levels. So, in the video, we can see like a group here and the other group there. So, we don't have like space to speak, or when they speak loud, we have to speak slow. And like, we really don't have a class like a normal student, like a normal person in school. Like, different, but we need a class, right? So, I guess so.
Great job.
Thank you.
I know everyone up here probably got some questions and comments, but first of all, I just want to say thank you. This whole presentation's been really heartwarming, and it makes us feel great about our schools. But, you know, thank you. Thank you for sharing your culture with us. Thank you for being our neighbors. Thank you for being Bulldogs. I can't imagine what it must be like to uproot as a young adult and leave your country, your language, your family, your culture, your school, your friends, and come to a brand-new place where you don't know how people talk and you don't know how to learn. And you folks have come a really, really long way, you can tell. You've taken what Rockland Schools has to offer, and I can hear that you think that there are some ways that we can do it better. And we're always searching to do that. But you've taken advantage of it, and I can see that you're really doing a great job. And, you know, people like you are going to, people like you and kids your age are going to be what bring Rockland into the future. And I'm really glad to have you be part of our town, and I'm glad to have you be part of our schools. Great job, and keep it up. And, you know, I hope you keep finding this to be a welcoming place. Gentlemen?
I just got a couple of questions. You're talking about, it seems like you have maybe different students with different languages. How many different groups do you think you have? In what language? You're Portuguese?
Me or...
Either one.
Okay, we speak Portuguese.
You have Portuguese.
We speak Brazilian.
Right. And then do you have any Haitian Creole students in there?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, how many of those do you have?
I have two.
Okay. But do you know what the overall ratio is between, you know, as well as...
So, it's mostly Brazilian, we can probably count.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we can count probably on our hands about the other languages that we have. Under ten. Under ten.
Right. So, do you integrate all these in the ESL, all the different students? So, they're learning, you know, not only English, but maybe a little Haitian, and maybe a little Portuguese, and that? Or you stay away from that?
At the high school level, it's all Brazilian except for one Polish-speaking student. So, they all speak a common language. But as Leonardo said, they're all from different parts of the country, so they all bring a different flavor from the country, and different linguistic abilities. And so, I think one thing, correct me if I'm wrong, but what Luani was referring to is in one classroom, we have level one beginners to people like Leonardo in one classroom. Right. And that's down to the elementary school, too. Sometimes we have to mix the levels, because we just don't have those resources.
Right.
But we all focus on trying to get them to be speaking English, so that they can participate in their classes as best as possible, hopefully to the same degree as their peers. So, that's our goal, and we try the best we can at what we have.
That chart you put up there at the beginning, that was a scife? Is that, you know, the breakdown of each one?
The second...
Yeah, well, you have, you know, beginners, two beginners, then you have intermediate, and then you're bridging and stuff like that. Okay. All right. Now, you're all required to take the EM-CAS, too, right, in English?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Wouldn't it be nice if you could turn around and say to the Commissioner of Education, here, here's a test in Portuguese? Go ahead and turn and do it. Yeah, thank you. Great job.
I'm impressed, because Luani, you said you couldn't speak any English. And how long have you been here?
Three years.
That's amazing. Great job.
They both heard very hard.
I mean, that's...
Very good students.
You speak better than some people my age that have been here their entire lives. So, it's incredible. So, great job, guys.
You still using the I's? You still working on the I's?
Yeah.
I just want to commend you on your courage. I can't imagine having to make a decision like you folks made at the age that you were, taking that step. It's magnificent. I just, I can't imagine doing it, and your courage is just wonderful.
Good job.
Thank you.
Great job. One more round of applause. Keep up the good work. We look forward to a great future for both of you. Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda, we do have a PBIS presentation.
Yes. Smith?
Hi, Ms. Smith.
I get to go up first.
Okay.
All right. So, I want to thank you for letting us come tonight and speak to you about PBIS. PBIS has been in the district now at the elementary school level for three years. This is our third year, and so I like to think that it came with me. It's, PBIS stands for Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports. So, what we do is we teach our students lessons about positive behaviors. It comes with lots of rewards and lots of praise and lots of modeling. Our motto amongst all three elementary schools is to be safe, be respectful, and be responsible. And every morning, we start with a Bulldog Pledge. So, that's what we're going to ask, did we hand out copies to everybody? So, everybody's got a copy of the pledge. I want to introduce JoJo, Joseph Andre, and Riley Bowlin, who are going to lead us in the Bulldog Pledge.
In the Rockland Public Schools, we treat everyone with respect. We take responsibility for ourselves and our learning, and we strive for a safe, positive, and happy school for all.
Okay, so I'm going to leave it to these quite capable students.
Hi, I'm JoJo Andre, and this is Riley Bowlin. We are going to tell you all about PBIS. At the Esten School, first I'm going to tell you about character awards. Character awards are given monthly. Each month is a different character trait. May's trait is determination. I have received the character award for perseverance. And Riley received the character award for respect. All students that receive character awards have their picture taken by the principal and get a special pencil with their paw on it.
I'm going to tell you all about purple possum awards. Possum awards are given to students who show safe, respectful, and responsible behavior all month long. Possum awards are given by all staff members. I received a possum award for trying hard in math all month long and for having a growth mindset.
Now, I'd like to tell you about paws. Paws are given out by all staff to students who show safe, respectful, and responsible behavior. For example, a teacher or a par professional might walk up to a student and say, here's a paw for walking in the hallway. That is a very responsible of you. I would then write my first and last name on my paw and put in the bin in my classroom. My teacher then turns it all, the paws, at the end of the week, and they are used to pull the Bulldog of the Day and the Thursday Extras. Riley is going to tell you all about the Thursday Extras.
The Bulldog of the Day is chosen by the principal every morning in morning announcements. The Bulldog of the Day wears a special lanyard and gives the end-of-the-day pledge over the intercom. Thursday Extras are given to students who received paws but didn't get chosen for the Bulldog of the Day. Some of the Thursday Extras are extra specialist, lunch with a friend prize box, and lunch with the principal.
Here's our end-of-the-day Bulldog pledge. At the Esten Schools, we are safe, we are responsible, and we are respectful, we are Bulldogs. Have a great day, everyone.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. That is awesome.
What are you looking for? What are you looking for?
Thank you. Thank you.
What are you looking for, JoJo?
Thank you.
That's Miss Burlesque, right over there.
That's a tough name.
Thank you very much.
Well, great job. I know your parents are very proud of you. We're very proud of you. Riley, I know your daddy very well. Riley's daddy and I went to high school in a different town together, and I know he's very proud of you. Great job, JoJo. Great job, Riley. Yeah, oh, I get a pencil, so.
Thank you very much.
All right. Yeah. Awesome.
Hi, guys.
Hi. This is Jefferson School's PBIS presentation. I just want to thank Emily O'Brien, who is our coach for PBIS. Allison Scimbato is our other coach, and she's on maternity leave. But Anna Sorelli, grade-three teacher, is part of our PBIS team. Our student presenters are Simon and Michael Gibbermarium and Allison Leary. And they'll tell us about Jefferson PBIS.
Each week, we earn paw prints for being responsible, respectful, and safe. We can earn them from any teacher or staff member. We put the paws into a classroom jar, and on Fridays, they all get combined, and our Bulldogs of the Week are announced. The winners get a selfie with Rocky, our mascot. The picture goes on our selfie bulletin board for the school to see. All of our paw prints are combined, and once we fill a water jug to the top, we get to have a reward day celebration. All the kids vote on what they would like. We have had a whole school dance party, pajama day, and other fun events.
Our expectations are posted throughout our school to help us remember how to be respectful, responsible, and safe every day. The expectations are posted in the hallway, bathroom, cafeteria, bus, classroom, playground, and for assemblies.
Each month, we have a character trait focus. Last month, it was perseverance. At the end of the month, students who show the trait get a spirit stick. Mrs. Scheifle gives them out at our Spirit Stick Assembly. We collect them on our backpacks to show our classmates all of the hard work. PBIS is a great way for us to celebrate all the great things we do at Jefferson.
Great job. Good. I get more?
And we have a few items for the school committee.
Well, I'm glad to hear from them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rocky?
Oh, that's pretty cool.
Rocky, yeah. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Simon. A buddy.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Put it on my... How are you? Put it on my... Hello.
No problem. Thank you.
Hi, Allison, nice to meet you. Is my son Gavin in your class?
Can I ask you a question?
Is Gavin in your class?
No, he's in second grade.
Oh, exactly. Okay, I thought you were Mrs. O'Brien's.
I'm in fourth.
You're in fourth? Oh, my goodness.
Oh, wow, thank you. Oh, wow, nice.
Thank you, Jefferson School. I'm Kelsey Holbrook. I'm the Assistant Principal at Memorial Park, and I would like to give a shout-out right off the bat to Holly Gage, our school counselor and coach over in the corner. And accompanying her is Monica Babcock and Ruthann LaChudo, who are all very involved in all of the PBIS initiatives in our school. And without further ado, the stars of the evening, I have Colin McKenna from fourth grade, Kaylee Kelleher from third grade, and JoJo Craig from second grade. They're going to tell you a little bit about Memorial Park's PBIS.
We have monthly pride assemblies. They are led by student leaders. Each assembly focuses on a positive trait that staff is looking to see. This month's trait is sportsmanship. Every day, teachers are looking to see students practicing this trait, and they hand out paws. If you are seen showing that trait, and for being respectful, responsible, and safe, these paws get collected and dumped into a giant bin. And when the bin is full, we get a school-wide celebration like extra recess or pajama day. At the assemblies, teachers give out pride awards. These pride award winners walk into the assemblies on a green carpet.
If you get a paw, it goes into a bin. Every day, Mrs. Russell pulls a paw from the bin, and that person is the Bulldog of the Day. The Bulldog sits up... If you are seen showing that trait, and for being respectful, responsible, and safe, these paws get collected and dumped into a giant bin. And when the bin is full, we get a school-wide celebration like extra recess or pajama day. At the assemblies, teachers give out pride awards. These pride award winners walk into the assemblies on a green carpet.
If you get a paw, it goes into a bin. Every day, Mrs. Russell pulls a paw from the bin, and that person is the Bulldog of the Day. The Bulldog sits at a special table with a friend at lunch and is the first to line up for lunch and recess. Kids get excited in the morning to hear if their name is called. Classrooms compete for the cleanest table in the golden dustpan challenge. Custodians pick the cleanest table each day after lunch, and the classroom moves forward on the golden dustpan race track, hoping to earn special things at lunch like fancy tablecloths and Brady the Bulldog.
We say the Bulldog Pledge every morning. We have posters hanging up all over the school to remind us of the expectations and the part of the building, like cafeteria, hallway, and playground. We use the peace and quiet sign signals in the hallway to remind our friends to use a level-zero voice. We work, we all work together to be respectful, responsible, and safe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job, buddy.
Thank you, sir.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Memorial Park. We have exciting news for the coming school year. We have partnered with the Rockland Public Library, Mike's Pizza and Yanni's Pizza in Rockland, to recognize students who have Bulldog pride in the community. These establishments have agreed to recognize students who come into their restaurant or the library and show respect, responsibility, and safety. These restaurants will put a stamp on the back of the receipts, a paw print stamp, if students come in and are following these expectations. And the library will hand out bookmarks, which you'll hear about in just a moment. We want to thank Vicki Pertacorus of Yanni's, Ronald Lopes of Mike's, and Erin Pulio of the Rockland Public Library for quickly accepting our offer of partnership. They had no trouble coming right on board. So it's exciting to get the community involved. And we have an example of a poster that will be hung in each community partner. And we have Mike Gaiet to share a little bit about the bookmark campaign that he started.
Hi. So the students of Jefferson and Memorial Park Elementary School helped make these bookmarks to be handed out at the public library. I wanted to make a bookmark that the kids would want to earn. So they made these origami bookmarks. And they fit in the books like this, right in the corner. So they'll earn these if they're caught being safe, responsible, and respectful. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gaiet. I just wanted to let you know he is the art teacher. So he is a wonderful art teacher and gets right involved with the students. And Mrs. Holbrook?
I just wanted to throw in a final word of a thanks to Linda Miniglia for when she first came into the district, really starting PBIS and getting all the three elementary schools brought together. And all the three building principals, Mrs. Sheehan, Marilyn, and where's Michelle? And Michelle, all supporting it. And especially Ms. Selena, who's kind of been behind the scenes, puppeteering everything over here, because she works diligently to support our teachers and all the students through everything. So thank you to everyone for the efforts.
So first off, great job to these kids. I mean, it's not easy to get up at a meeting like this and get up and talk in front of a lot of people. You guys are awesome. Great job. Really, well done. You know, and the other part, just on the PBIS stuff, having two kids of my own that are Jefferson students, I get to see this firsthand. My kids come home after earning a paw print or some positive recognition, and they are so excited about it when they're recognized. And on days, really every day, they strive to get recognized. It's really that carrot on the stick. I mean, you know, we talk about it at home as parents. It's reflected on us, knowing that it's, seeing how successful it is in the schools to, you know, give positive interference to your kids. I'm just so glad to see it working well in our schools, and these kids are great examples of it. Any questions?
Well, I got a suggestion. I was thinking that maybe you would get up and have, get on camera with all the presenters. So, you know, so they could, you know, you could be recognized with all these PPS, PBIS?
Fine by me. Come on up, guys. How about with all the committee? Come on over here. How about stand right in front of the table here?
With all the committee? I was just thinking, nicely viewed.
How about all of us? We're all proud of these kids. Come on right over.
I like this.
Great job. We're all proud of you guys.
I like two dogs. I know, only two dogs.
There's two dogs. Who's the other dog?
Oh, he's in the pound.
Right over here. Guys did a super job.
Absolutely. Let's get a big round of applause for these kids. And a big round of applause for the administrators and the teachers who are in the middle of this whole school. Not possible without all of you people. Thank you so much. Great job.
Thank you, Pam.
Great job. Well done. Thank you. Now, I know you guys probably don't want to sit around for the rest of this boring meeting. It's going to be boring now that you guys aren't going to be part of it. Thank you so much for being here. And go home and hope that your parents give you a couple of extra Oreos or chocolate chip cookies.
Oh, no.
Thank you so much. Next on tonight's agenda is our superintendent's report. Dr. Cron.
Good luck following. I know. Exactly. Exactly. Okay. So I just have a few reminders. First of all, strategic planning is wrapping up. And this Thursday night, the 25th, at 6:00 PM in the lecture hall, I'll be presenting, I'll be presenting an overview of the strategic plan to this point. That's the 25th, this Thursday night. And then it will be presented to the school committee here on June 12th at our meeting. So I just wanted to invite, everyone is welcome to attend. The next thing I'd like to share is, I'm wondering if our principal, Mr. John Harrison, could join me up at the podium for one second. So last Thursday, Mr. Harrison became Doctor Harrison. He was, congratulations. Received his doctorate from Northeastern University. And I know that he won't be a person who wants to correct people, because I know how kind of weird and uncomfortable it feels sometimes. But I think that Doctor Harrison represents Rockland. And I think that it's good for the public and for the students to know that we continue our education, and it goes on and on and on. And I think it's a feather in the cap of the town of Rockland to have a doctor as principal. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that he is now a doctor, and I think it's awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations, John. That's great. That's, you know, that's a lot of work. I mean, it's a lot of work that's not required of Doctor Harrison to do. And we congratulate you. We are really proud of you. He's been doing a great job in his first year here at Rockland High School. Kind of feels like he's always been here a little bit. But great job, John. We're all really proud of you. That's great.
And I actually have something in common with Doctor Harrison. My first year as principal here in Rockland, I completed my doctorate during that first year. And I can tell you, it's like having, you know, another job. So I know that's no easy feat. And he's been here at 6:00 in the morning and every day until, I don't know how late, every night. So he's doing a phenomenal job, and we're very lucky.
I just want to say to the townspeople of Rockland, these are the type of people that the Rockland Public Schools are attracting. They're here for our kids. I don't think they're any, any better. And I'm very proud, proud to be associated with them and proud to have them here.
I agree. I agree. I second that.
Yeah.
Our administration, the staff people here, and the teachers, super. I enjoy listening to what they have to say, and I enjoy when they put these presentations together for us. You know, it shows that, you know, I mean, they're here now, and they're interested. They're interested in our students, and that's a really good feeling.
You know, there's, I just kind of feel, and it's been like this for a little bit, but it seems to be growing. It's just a district-wide enthusiasm. And I think that starts at the top. It starts with our superintendent. It starts with our principals. And it goes down to our faculty and our children who are here tonight. So things are going very, very well. I agree with both of you guys just said. Congratulations, Doctor Harrison. And I don't think we ever actually publicly congratulated you in a manner...
That's okay. I'm good. I'm all right. I'm good.
So, you know, maybe a little bit late. We're proud of you as well, Dr. Cron. I remember when I first started, you were, when you were doing that work, you were coming here and staying overnight in hotels and commuting. And it's tough work individually, but it's tough work for a family. It's tough work to balance that with your job. And like Dick said, these are the kind of people that Rockland Public Schools are attracting. And, you know, we're lucky. We really are. We're blessed.
And we want to support, I think it's important for the district to support the ongoing education of our teachers. This year, we're actually, I'm not, I should say, I'm almost proud to report that we're over budget in one of our lines. And that line item is reimbursements for education. So our teachers, we have a lot of young teachers, and they're going back to school, and they're taking advantage of the incentive that we offer. That's something that I never had, and so I'm sure they appreciate it, because it is the difference between, am I going to go to the movie Friday night? Or am I going to stay home and eat SpaghettiOs? And it makes a difference. So I'm glad that we value education. And I'm waiting, going to have, we're going to have Ms. Miniglia up here shortly to introduce her as a new doctor, too. So, yep, that's going to be happening. So we want to encourage that. And finally, I wanted to just give an update. There are two things going on, the elementary school building project. And I want to talk about the formation of the building committee. So the MSBA mandates certain, certain people with certain qualifications are on this committee, and that's what we've been operating for, from, in the formation of this committee. So I've been working with Alan Shaka, our manager, town manager, and to come up with sort of a draft list and then have it vetted. But this week, speaking with Mr. Mills, who fortunately brought this up, that there's actually an article on the book that helped form the building committee that did the middle school and the high school. And it goes back to 2006. So this article from 2006, it lays out how that previous building committee was laid out. So this is new as of this morning, but I've spoken to, I've spoken to Kevin Henderson, our moderator, and we're working on it. I've spoken to John Clifford, our attorney. And he's just making sure that if we're bound by law to do something a certain way, do we need to close out a committee and start a new one? How do, you know, how do we need to do it? And I've also spoken to John Rogers, who eventually was the chair of the previous committee, just to try to figure out, you know, how was this thing done before? Because, again, institutional knowledge, in the past, I've been able to sort of pick up the phone, call John Rutchless, "John, how did you do this before?" And he could tell me the story. Well, he came on after this committee was formed. So, so anyway, I appreciate everyone's patience. I just wanted to give, get everyone up to speed. We are forming the building committee. We're fine with MSBA. We're working with our attorney to make sure that we form this committee properly and that it continues on. So, and then finally, we have, as everyone knows, we have a school committee vacancy. And so just to let everyone know how that's working, we have two candidates that submitted letters of interest. And the way that works procedurally is, together with the selectmen, we do what's called a roll-call vote. And so on the 6th of September, which is the next June, thank you, June, the next selectman's meeting, we will, the school committee will be joining the selectmen at their meeting for a roll-call vote to vote between the two candidates. So that is how we're proceeding with filling the school committee vacancy. And then that vacancy would be filled until May, and then the new election, that person could decide to run again or not.
From the correspondence from the two candidates, it would seem as though we have two very high-quality candidates.
Absolutely.
And I think it should be noted that we should thank both of them for expressing their interest. They're both wonderful candidates, and I think we'd be blessed whoever we end up with.
Absolutely. Yeah. The two candidates are just Emily Harrison of Smith Lane and, where is she? And Dr. Melissa Morrow Small. And I don't know where she lives. No. Heritage Drive. But we're very pleased. They're two excellent candidates, and I'm looking forward to having one of them sitting up here at the table with you gentlemen next time. And that is all I have for you tonight.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments for Dr. Cron? Okay. Very good. Next on tonight's agenda, financial reports. We have financial reports for April. We have five reports, so we'll entertain five motions. One report for the school department, one for the high school student activities, one for middle school student activities, one for the cafeteria, and one for the daycare. Five seconds. Do we have all in favor, excuse me, all those in favor, that is a vote. Thank you, gentlemen. Next up, we have monthly reports for March, of which we have 18. We have the art department, athletic, computer technology, daycare, deans, English 5 to 8, English 9 to 12, family consumer science, math 5 to 8, math 5 to 12, music, physical education, radio, TV station, science, social studies, special education, middle school, and foreign language. We'll entertain 18 motions.
18 seconds?
All those in favor, that is a vote. Thank you.
Just one comment, if I could, under Dr. Cron's, well, actually, it's Cheryl Thompson, the art director. I see next year, we're going to have two nights of the arts festival, which I think is wonderful. And along with that, it's great to see progress in the arts, both in this department and in the music department. I see things going forward, and it's very much appreciated, all the hard work, you doing the hiring and getting the people in the right places to make things better. So I appreciate that.
Ditto. Absolutely. Thank you very much. All right, next, under old business, we have a request for approval for the 2017-2018 elementary handbook. This is a second reading.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor? I thank you. That's a vote. Next up, request for approval for the 2017-18 Rockland High School handbook, and this too is a second reading.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. That's a vote. Request for approval of Friedlands and Relias, Relias, am I saying that right?
Perfect.
Relias, thank you. AP Environmental Science for AP textbook. And this too is a second reading.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor? I thank you, gentlemen. Next up, we have a completed fundraiser. The sped pack had a toll booth. And thankfully, our motorists in Rockland are very generous because they were able to raise $2,500. That's fantastic. And, by the way, the sped pack is doing a fantastic job. I know that they've got some great people that are involved with that, and congratulations to them. Great job. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under new business, we have a special education pack report.
They're coming next time, I believe.
Okay, so we'll skip that.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Next week, next meeting, right?
Okay, so we'll move that to next meeting. Then we have the Esten School PAC.
Ms. Smith?
I've been very fortunate as the principal at Esten to have Mrs. Minnie as my PAC president as long as I've been there. And I don't know how we functioned without her, honestly. She has, she takes all my ideas and runs with them and creates the best things for parents and kids. And I'm going to share with you her report, and she's going to explain it to you.
And hopefully, you'll be as kind to me as you were to those beautiful children that were up here, because this is not what I do for a living at all. I'm a mom. But this report, I just tried to make it, as we say, clear, quick, and concise. It kind of gives you the fundraising that we try and do. We're trying new fundraisers each year. There are some that we know work amazing. Some, as you can see, we've started new maybe this year, didn't do so good. You can see by the lovely graph on the back. So that's a learning experience for us. So, that's a learning experience for us, where most of our money comes from, what works well, what parents like. We're finding different times of the day work better for fundraising. So, starting, as I say, you can certainly run through it and read it, but we started something new this year called Script, which is a gift card program. We just did that at Christmas time, and that brought us in a couple of hundred dollars, and we will be doing it again, but maybe we'll pick a different time of the year. So, we've done quite a few fundraisers, and as you can see, under our approved disbursements, field trips we pay for, field day we pay for, we've done four scholarships this year for the Rockland High School, the Rockland Education Foundation. That's very, it's near and dear to me because of my parents and Mr. Phelps, but it's also just, I think it's a very important, every child that applies for one is a former Esten student, so that, that for us is amazing. We do the student supplies, assemblies, staff appreciation, Brockton Rocks, we're taking the, the kids to the Brockton Rocks. It was a reading incentive program whereby they could get a free ticket, but what we do as an added incentive is we give them what they call a family deal, and we pay for their food if they choose to go, so, or they can buy food, they can buy souvenirs. So, that's something a little bit extra. And you can see our events at the bottom. These are things that we sponsor at the school at no cost to any of the parents or the students that come in. And as I say, the, the back is really more for, for us to kind of see where all of our fundraising dollars, the scholastic that you see on the front, we do a book fair in the spring, and we do a book fair in the winter, and we're doing one more this year, which is a buy one, get one free, which worked well. But what those are, that's scholastic dollars, that with the scholastic dollars, we're able to purchase, we're buying new rugs for 4th grade this year, we buy what we call bruised books, so that we can actually give the children a book that can't buy one for themselves. And we buy all the scholastic, all the grades use scholastic magazines, we can purchase that with those funds. So, I love the book fair, it's probably one of my favorite times of the year, it's coming up again, too. So, as I say, for me, it's been a great honor to serve with Marilyn and the moms that I've been working with, the dads that I've been working with. It's just been an amazing experience for me. It's hard, I complain, but I'm thrilled at the end of the year, and I look forward to, I have one more, I have a third grader going into 4th grade, so this will be my, maybe my last year here at Esten. So, I just wanted to say thank you to Principal Smith and to all the parents that helped me out, too.
I know a lot of Esten.
I just want to say one thing about Maureen, since she's been here, she sent me this little, she sent me this message today. Since 2014, since she's been involved in the pack, the, the pack has sold.
I didn't send that to you for you to read here, it was just an amazing fact.
The pack has sold $34,511 in books, and has given children $6,902 books in their hands.
Awesome. Good job.
That's what it's all about, the kids.
Well, I know a lot of Esten families that will do their very, very best to try to prevent you from doing anything but leading this pack into the future. Our packs are what make our schools the communities that they really are. You know, family involvement are really what make these things tick.
And they are amazing, we do have amazing families.
We do, we sure, we sure do. And we're so lucky to have moms and, that are like you, that are willing to give up their time, and this is a lot of work. I don't know how, how much people realize how much work this is, and how much our children benefit from it. I mean, yeah, the numbers on this thing are absolutely astounding. So, awesome work, and I hope that if you do matriculate on, that there is somebody that can begin to, you know, fill your shoes.
I'm grooming them now.
Good, good.
I've had a little bit last year, and I'm grooming them now. So, when they have children that are just in kindergarten, so we have, we have a lot of time for them, so.
Well, let me introduce you to the principal of the middle school.
Yeah.
But I just want to say, I don't know what we would do without you guys, I really don't. You can have this list of everything that you provide for our kids, it wouldn't happen without you, it just wouldn't happen. You're, you're a big part of the glue that holds it all together and makes it special.
Thank you.
And I can't tell you how much we, we appreciate all that you've done.
Just to, just to let people know, it says here that you raised $27,579. That's a fair amount of money.
Incredible.
Incredible amount.
And they're not done yet, because they still got one more book fair, right?
Yeah, yeah, for this year.
That's an exceptional amount of money.
Yeah, that is. Yeah, that's, I got that circle with stars around it, you know, thank you very much.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah.
Since you were referencing middle school principal, next on our agenda tonight is the Rogers Middle School Pack.
I'm bringing Mrs. Beatrice up under, a little bit of dress, Christine Lewis, who is our sped pack, is out of state on business, so we have her notes that we're gonna share with you as far as what the pack has done. And before, Mrs. Beatrice, who is actually, you probably all know her as the middle school secretary, who does a fantastic job there, this is her, one of her other responsibilities, she helps with the pack and does a great job there, too. We just have a great group of parents, four or five, maybe six parents who come every month, and are just so creative and innovative in what they want to do for kids, to make it better for the kids, I think, at the middle school. But the other great thing that's happening lately is they've reached out to so many parents through, you know, email and in other ways, and although parents may not come to our meetings, they're very, very involved in our activities, and I appreciate that a great deal, and thank you to Mrs. Lewis and Mrs. Beatrice for all they do. And here's just a brief overview of what we've done so far this year.
Hello.
Hi.
So, I don't usually do this, so, sorry, in advance. This year, we had six fundraisers. We always have the Meadow Farms Catalog fundraiser, which brought in about $6,000. We always do that script, United Script gift card sales. This year was a little lower, $515. We had the book fair, and we raised two, over $2,000 in books for the school and the library. We had the Sharemark Classic, the basketball game with the staff and 8th grade students, that brought in just about $2,700. And during that game, we have the basket raffles that made about $550, and we do the box tops for education that brought in about $140. And then we sponsored, we pay for half of the agenda books for the school, we do a donation to the Philly trip and pay, help pay for a student that goes to Philly. We do field trips, pay for the buses for all the grades, Teacher Appreciation Week, we do an ice cream social in June, and we sponsor a hole at the Rockland Education Foundation Golf Tournament. And that's it.
Yes, sir.
It's not easy to get parents involved, it'll be easier soon, right? But it's not easy to get parents involved at the middle school level because of the kids being older, and they don't want their parents to be there. So, I think our pack has done a fantastic job.
What was the total amount? Do you have the total there?
Approximately $12,000.
Okay, good, very good, good. Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well done, and thank you for coming on, Mrs. Beatrice, thank you. Next on tonight's agenda, item D, we have an annual update from Chartwells.
I'd like to invite up Erin Long, District Manager of Chartwells, and Adele Leonard, our food service director, who has done a fabulous job this year.
She's doing a lot of food, she can handle it.
I don't know, maybe.
What's in the bag, Adele?
Oh, three bags.
What's in the bag?
And I have to say that Erin Long meets with me quite often, and anytime we need something, she's there for us, and she's a great support for our school system.
Can we make Mrs. Leonard a, you know, part of everybody?
Whatever, yeah. What do you do?
I'm surprised she didn't set up a food cart here.
Oh, the smoothies are great.
I don't know who gets more excited about the program in the summer.
Macho Nachos.
We're at the pie.
Oh, I've had this before, this is really good.
Oh, my gosh.
Can I have buffalo chicken dip?
So, it has dairy, cheese, chicken in it.
What is it?
It's dairy products, cheese and chicken.
Perfect.
Like cream cheese, in case anybody has an allergy.
Do they got any, they don't got any?
No, she has more.
Oh, she has more?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. Anyone who doesn't, anyone who doesn't want theirs?
I mean, I'm not gonna lie, it's clearly obvious that I haven't met a meal I don't like, so, thank you.
I have to say, this was created by Adele's staff, this is not something that came from Chartwells, as is.
She's the best.
Absolutely.
Great, how are you?
I'm following Alan's lead, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
It's amazing, amazing way you can do a chicken.
So, what I wanted to send, the reason why I did this is, one of the things I love to do with the kids, is I love to do taste testing, and this year, I've done it with the gym teacher at the high school, where we, the kids tried beets and roasted asparagus and different vegetables, which are good for them, and it kind of makes them more aware. I find it amazing that the state made so many changes with the lunch program, that it's, it's unbelievably amazing how much fruits and vegetables we go through up at the high school, because the kids are buying into it, and they're eating it, it's so much more healthier for them. So, this was a new recipe that we tried this year, we have a wonderful chef that created the recipe, and it's got a lot of chicken in it, the kids loved it, and it's really a nice product that the kids are enjoying adding it to the menu. But some of the new things that we're doing is breakfast after the bell at Memorial Park and at Jefferson right now. The counts have dropped just a slight, but for the most part, what the kids all do is, instead of going down to the classroom, they go to their classroom, drop their things, some of them, and some of them go right to the cafeteria and they get their breakfast. We did some, some grants, we, one of the grants we got was for a little over $3,000, thank God for Carleen, her and I scrambled to get these grants together so we can get some money to take care of some of the things that need to be taken care of. We also put five grants together for Fuel Up to Play 6 Day, which we're waiting for some information on it. And then I started on a venture, wanting to get a vehicle for my summer program, and I think Carleen must have thought I was too involved with so many things, but she found a way to get a vehicle for us. So, we ended up with some vehicle where we'll be driving around with our food going from the five sites that we have, which would be really kind of cool. Some of the things that I did in community services over at Esten, I love coming over there, she always invites me to do different things. I got to do Dr. Seuss and reading the classroom, and I did a little, I brought cookies, because when I was a little girl, my mother read to me, when we'd get up in the middle of the night, we always got cookies and milk. I couldn't bring the milk, but I brought the cookies, the kids were ecstatic, and I, it's like a highlight of my day. As I told you, working with the phys ed teacher, doing taste testings, different vegetables, I find it quite amusing that some of the kids like the beets, it's not something I'll eat, but, you know, I gotta let them try it. And then we work on training the staff on serve safe and allergy awareness, because it's very important in this day and age for those areas that they need to be understanding what's going on. Menus itself, we have Nutrislice, which is on our website, which is really kind of interesting, because it allows you to dissect the menu, you can find out if there's allergies and things that they, the children can't eat, you can click it off, and you get to see what the menu is and the caloric intake, so it's helping parents that, with children that might have issues. And that's something, moving forward, we're putting the summer menu on that website as well. The other thing that we found worked really well with our high school is we're doing bars, which are burger bars, and pasta bars, and buffalo chicken bars, and popcorn chicken bars. The kids love the idea that they can put the things together, where they can get fries, or they get mashed potatoes, and what kind, and they just, they get to create their burgers. The other thing that I did at the elementary schools, we did holiday treats on different holidays. We brought in cookies that the kids could have for the different holidays, Easter, Memorial Day, the different kinds, they get a little cookie, and the kids think it's pretty cool. It helps increase participation. And then the last thing, again, at Esten, I, I like to approach people that are willing to try different things, and what I ended up doing over at Esten is, at the end of last year, we started this Froyo Friday, and it's a big hit with the kids, it's orange leaf ice cream. We sell at the high school and at the middle school, orange leaf yogurt. And we do it on Friday at Esten, and the kids absolutely love it. They have to bring $2, and that's the only deal that comes behind it, because it is coming from orange leaf, and the kids just think it's the greatest thing. We sell a ton of it, and it's, it's on the A-list, which is really nice. And that's basically what we've been doing.
Awesome, very good.
We have, I just, for the record, we have the best food service manager on the planet.
We'll have no argument about that.
And I do have to say, I've been with my colleagues quite often every other month, and sometimes we have conferences, they ask me, "How does Rockland make money in the food service?"
Yeah, consistently.
Account, and I say it's because of our food service directors.
Consistently, consistently. And, you know, on the financial end, obviously, she's doing a fantastic job, but on the kids' end, just on the human level, the kids love the food, I mean, it's good food, my kids love buying lunch. My wife loves making them lunch, and they're disappointed when they ended up with peanut butter and jelly sometimes.
I have a wonderful staff.
But they're healthy, they're healthy, great meals, and you're doing a fantastic job. And I, this committee has said it before in the past, and we're, we've said it to other people tonight, but we're lucky to have you. You're, you're part of what makes this district run.
I have to say, my staff gives it, you know, it's, they're wonderful. Today, I asked my, my high school manager if she'd help me out by putting together a batch of the buffalo chicken dip and feeding all the other kids, she put together the batch for me, so it was really quite awesome. So, it's a great bunch of girls to work with.
I'm gonna need some more of this tomorrow, just to test it fully.
Quality control.
You know, I like to do a two-day time span.
Yeah, the other thing I'm really interested in, you know, hearing a little bit more, not now, but, you know, about this fruit and vegetable buy-in by the students, I mean, that seems to be, you know, a lot of them, I don't like it. Have you ever tasted it? No, and you're introducing them to.
Well, I try it in different ways, I don't, I know when I was a kid, my mother used to make me eat asparagus, and she'd boil the living daylights out of it. But I roast it, and it gives it a totally different taste, a little bit of garlic, a little bit of olive oil or oil on it, and the kids, they're picking it up and eating it like it's candy, they're like, "Can I have another piece?" Like, it's just something they like. So, I guess if you introduce it in a different way, they like that.
Like black beans and brownies.
Yeah, those were awesome.
What is this?
I don't know.
Oh, you have to taste it. Black beans and brownies.
I could go for that, yeah.
We did chickpea chocolate chip cookies, too, those went over really good.
Chickpea, chocolate chip cookies?
Anything with chocolate chips will pass.
True, true.
Chocolate.
Exciting what you're doing with the summer program, too. I mean, there's a lot of kids that are eating some really healthy, great meals consistently in the summer, where they might have not been otherwise, and I'm glad for you that you're getting that van, too.
We want more kids to come, though.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So, I encourage people to look into it at home, I mean, it is a great program. We want these kids to be up there enjoying the outside, enjoying like that great food, and.
I've even, I've even purchased my fair share of those lunches.
What are the five sites, though? Would you share that with everybody, so everyone knows?
The new one that's gonna be starting July 5th is the library, the public library. But the four that are starting on the 26th of June are, well, it's inside-outside, we get Jefferson, inside-outside, which is a closed and an open site, Hot Stuff Park, Hot Stuff Park, which is an inside-and-outside camp, and then Spring Gate. So, we've covered quite a few of the areas of the town, and anybody from the age of little to the age of 18, we don't ask for IDs, we don't ask for anything, they come, get a meal, the only stipulation is they have to eat on the site. We got a tent for the Jefferson, so that the people that come to Jefferson, we have picnic tables, and they sit under the picnic table, under the tent, and sit at the picnic tables and eat their lunch, and we have trash barrels out there, and it works out really nice, it's a nice program.
It is a nice program.
The next school committee meeting, we'll have more information on that, the exact times and so forth.
Great, that was gonna be my next question, Carleen, just for those at home that don't know. Be able to share that with everybody because I'm sure that part of the challenge of getting more people there is communicating it, of course. And I'm sure there are some folks that don't know.
We're gonna go to the Rockland Day event and we're gonna be passing out flyers there. And I'm also gonna try to do the dog.
Dash.
Yes, dog dash. And then I'm gonna go up to the vendors uptown and have them put the flyers on their windows if they're willing to, to advertise for us for the school year, for the summer.
Outstanding. Thank you very much. Thanks for all that you do.
So Adele has all the fun stuff. And then I have the numbers and the boring stuff. So the document that I just passed out when your nachos and buffalo chicken dip were getting distributed is regarding meal pricing. And every year we have this conversation with the school committee. As you may remember from conversations that we've had in the past few years, there's a formula that has to be assessed every school year by every school district that participates in the National School Lunch Program. The USDA manages the lunch program across the country. And they have said that we have to keep pace basically with the reimbursement rates that they provide for when we serve any type of meal. They give school districts money for free meals as well as reduced and as well as paid. So the formula is in a big worksheet and you plug in paid meal counts basically from the month of October. And then the formulas calculate to tell you what pricing point you have to be at the following school year. Next year, for the start of 2017, 18, the average weighted price has to be $2.86. So Rockland, when we put in the paid meal prices, fell just below that by about four cents. So that told us that we have to make a recommendation to you all to look at a moderate price increase for the start of next year. So what we've done over the last few years when we've presented is given you a sense of history of where the meal pricing has been in Rockland, which is the top box that you see going across from left to right, the various years and how much of an increase and where the increases were occurred, whether it was elementary or secondary. And then the information below is some anticipated pricing for next school year based on local communities that we contacted. So the items, the school districts that are in red, we weren't able to get valid confirmation on their pricing next year. Either they hadn't determined it or we weren't able to reach them. So the towns that are in red are, that's current pricing for this year. But all the towns that have black text, that's confirmed pricing for next school year. That's where they're gonna be at for pricing for next school year. And Rockland, as you can see, is highlighted in blue just for your reference point. So the, almost every school district that was contacted has an adult lunch price of $4 with the exception of Rockland and Hanover currently. So that's just to give you kind of a benchmark. So with all that being said, the options that we're presenting are in the yellow box, top right corner. We could either look at a nickel increase, which would satisfy the requirement of this formula that I just mentioned, or we could look at a 10 cent increase, which would get the pricing to a quarter. It would round it off to a quarter. It's something that has to be decided by you all before the start of next school year. Does not have to be decided on tonight unless you would like to. But we wanted to present you with, you know, comparable information for different school districts nearby and give you a sense of history and why it is that this has to be discussed every year. Yes.
Just a quick question. I see the increases there. Are you also looking for an increase on the adult lunch?
It would be our suggestion to keep pace with.
The $4?
Yeah, the other communities as well. That's not part of the legislation, which is why we didn't include it, but just to keep pace comparably with local towns.
I guess because I don't totally understand. When I see a substantial profit this year, why are we increasing the lunch prices?
Because it's legislation. It has to be.
So they, the legislature tells us.
The USDA.
Mr. Phelps, what we can do with that extra money though is buy things for the cafeterias.
Right.
We can machinery or whatever, equipment.
That's obviously necessary in some of the, all the schools.
One other option that districts can consider is to not have a price increase, but then the calculated value of an increase. So let's say the minimum price increase needed in any year is a nickel. We'll use Rockland as an example, a nickel this year. If the district decided not to increase the meal prices by a nickel, the calculated loss of revenue, you know, nickel times the number of paid lunches that would be served that year, the value of that, which might be $2,000, let's say, would have to be made up by another source of funding in the district, not government funds, local money.
I understand now. I understand. Don't like it, but I understand.
Well, that being said, given the two options that we have, whether it be a 5 cent increase or a 10 cent increase, the 5 cent increase would keep us in line with those standards, correct?
Correct.
So I mean, I don't know about anybody else, but my feeling would be that if we are in a position that we are very comfortable financially with our cafeteria services on a year in, year out basis, I wouldn't feel as that we would need to raise it to a 10 cent.
No, I agree. I'd like to ask if you have a suggestion.
I just wanna make you aware that any money, it's a revolving account, so any money that is made or in that account can only be spent on that, you know, on the cafeteria.
What would be your recommendation on that, Dr. Cron?
I don't wanna make a profit from the kids when it comes to food. I'd like to see it staying as close to breaking even as possible. So I feel more comfortable with the 5 cent increase.
And to be clear, this committee would not be looking for an increase at all if not, if it was not mandatory for us to do that.
We probably wouldn't be making the profit we're making if it wasn't for the blue apron.
Right.
That's correct.
How's that?
I make a motion that we increase the prices by a nickel.
All those in favor? Aye. That's a vote. Thank you.
Now, do you wanna do the adult, the $4?
Sure. Do you have a motion to make?
I'll make a motion to the $4.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Okay.
Have a nice summer.
You too.
Thank you very, very much.
We'll see you at Hartsburg Park and we'll see you at the farm stand.
Yes, I hope so.
Thank you, Erin. Thank you.
Yes, that's true. Yeah, that's true. Well, my kids are.
Thank you.
Are you selling recipes too?
Yeah, I get that for you.
Okay. Next on tonight's agenda, item F, request for approval for a trip to Guatemala in February of 2018. Dr. Cron.
Dr. Harrison, do you have a group?
I've seen this group before.
I know.
Weren't you up here recently?
We're just here.
Welcome back.
I feel like we're always here.
Did you bring nachos?
You brought nachos. They're really not very good anyway.
Is it worth the 5 cents?
So these are our two new chaperones for this year. So we are looking at increasing the trip numbers. So this is Ms. Fagan. She's in the guidance department at Rockland High. Ms. Maderos is in the art department and she's been kind enough to come on as a backup chaperone in case, for whatever reason, someone else can't go. And we also have Chad Bigsby as our male chaperone. He is a high school English teacher, but he couldn't make it because of his kids and stuff. So, and then Mel Shaughnessy, our other chaperone, and myself, Amanda, so.
So what we're proposing this time around is a February vacation trip for 2018. We're looking into taking a maximum of 18 kids, but we're looking to keep it again at juniors and seniors. We're really excited to offer the opportunity to more kids. It seemed like the trip was wildly successful and popular. A lot of kids are very interested in learning more information and getting excited to apply. So here we are. We were just wondering if you guys had any questions with the information that we submitted.
When do you leave and when you come back?
So we're thinking, so we chose February because it's a little bit better. There are a lot of students who do spring sports that would have wanted to go but couldn't go in April. So we figured February was a better time. So we're tentatively looking at flights right now. We did find one that leaves at 11:30 PM on Friday, which would require no missed school. It would bring us to Guatemala on Saturday morning, so it would give us another full day. And then we would look at coming back on the next Friday or Saturday. So either way, we're not gonna, our goal is to have no missed school for it. So we would leave late Friday night or early Saturday morning.
Anything else going on? There's no.
No.
I mean, it looks very similar from the trip that we just were pleased to see very positive results from. Is there anything that you learned from the last trip that you'd be doing differently for this time around?
Yeah, so we're gonna restructure some of our transportation. We're gonna get a bigger shuttle from the airport to make sure we can accommodate more luggage. Like we said, we increased the size because our trip before was so successful and there were a lot of kids who felt like they had wanted to go. We also kind of restructured our payment policy so the kids will be able to pay and fundraise over the summer. So that should give them a little bit more time to just kind of bring in more money for it. And I think itinerary-wise, our itinerary that we chose is pretty successful. We're probably gonna change it to one free day because the kids did vote to have their free day as a workday the last time. So probably change it to one free day and move that to later in the trip and give them more volunteer opportunities, so.
Is there any male-female ratio? Are you gonna try to get a 50/50?
We usually, because we have more female chaperones, we end up usually taking more girls. The girls seem to be more interested in the trip. So it probably would end up being like, if it's the same as last year, like two-thirds female and then the rest are male, if that's how it works out. But we do have a male chaperone in the event that, you know, there's more males.
I think a lot of it will depend on who winds up applying and whose parents are able to make it for the parent meeting. So that way we can make sure that from the very beginning, that all of the parents understand what they're signing up for and that they're aware of what the requirements are.
Yeah, we're definitely gonna, like last year, students have to get vaccinations before they travel. And we were not aware that, parents were not aware of the costs. So we're gonna kind of give an outline of like the cost of, potential cost of like vaccinations, which parents have to pay for and potential passport fees if their child does not have a passport, which some parents were understandably surprised by. So we're just gonna kind of outline that more in our parent meetings so that they're aware of it.
So you're having a parent meeting?
Yeah, so we're gonna, our goal is if it does get approved tonight, we're gonna pass out our applications tomorrow. We're gonna have an informative parent meeting at some point this week. We just have to choose a day which works better for everybody. We'll go through all the requirements with the parents and then parents who can't attend can kind of meet with one of us if they have the opportunity to come after school a different day. And then we'll be able to choose our kids based on which parents were able to come to the meeting or contact us and can kind of commit to it.
It's really important for us that the parents understand the, what the trip entails, I guess, and the cost of it, of course, but also how their kids are gonna be able to grow from it, which I think is the biggest draw for this particular community. I think we did a really good job of delivering that to the parents last time and we're looking forward to doing that again at the next parent meeting.
You just covered exactly that, kind of what I was gonna, those comments and ask about was that when we first started talking about this trip in its infancy last year, that was my real biggest concern, is that this is really a different kind of a trip. This is different than other foreign travel trips and certainly any other trips that we've done. And my concern was being able to have really a high level of communication with parents of prospective students who are gonna be going on this trip, both from expectations, from, you know, itinerary to safety issues, to safety and dietary concerns. And, you know, that might be my concern last time. You really did a great job with that, I think. It seemed as though that everyone really was on the same page, knew what they were getting into and were very supportive of it. And I think that would be my concern that, for this time. But you've already talked about it and it seems as though you're right on top of it as well. It's just making sure that, you know, parents, prospective parents of this understand that this is a different kind of a trip and that certainly you aren't prepared for it. But I'm pleased that you're doing it. Any other comments from the committee?
I have one more question. Besides the shots, you require that the students have physicals, up-to-date physicals.
So we ask for updated health information. So if they've had a physical to, before, you know, when they enter high school, they're usually fine. But we do gather information on underlying, like conditions and medical, you know, medical conditions and medications the kids might be on. Then we also have the kids visit a travel clinic. So the travel clinic is something that their doctor would recommend to them. There's one at Jordan Hospital, one at Tufts Hospital, where they go over all of the kind of nuances of traveling abroad and things that might happen. Some kids get medication from the travel clinic and that really prepares the kids to travel. And upon visiting the travel clinic, it's kind of like an assessment of the kid's health and whether or not they can travel. So that's one of the requirements that we do have before the kids attend. And they, all of our students who went this year attended the travel clinic and got all the information that they needed.
What about replacement medication in case they?
So we require that the kids refill all their prescriptions before they leave, anything they take every day and they just bring it with them so that we don't have to replace anything.
What happens if they lose their luggage or something like that? Something happens, or they get wet?
So it's pretty common practice to always carry your prescription medication in your carry-on so that you don't lose it. You never pack your medication. So if you carry your carry-on with you, then that's your prescription medication that you would carry. In the event that you do lose it, there are pharmacies. And like I have diabetes and I'm able to access insulin and any other medication I take in a pharmacy in Guatemala. So we can get a prescription through a health clinic from a doctor. I've had to do that myself before. So medication is really not a worry. They have all the same medications that we do and it's actually like a million times cheaper.
So you require them to have, take extra prescriptions with them?
Yep, yep, we do that. We have them refill everything, make sure it's clearly labeled with their names on it. And, you know, your doctor, if you tell them, "Hey, I'm gonna travel and worried about losing this", they'll usually give you an extra medication. So we didn't have, we didn't have any medication issues with any of our kids because that was one of, one thing that we were very like clear and stressed multiple times with them, that if you have a prescription medication that you need to bring as much as you possibly can bring.
One of the things that worked really well last time that I think we'll do again this year is having several workshops leading up to the trips. So one of the workshops we did, we packed the donations and we went over kids like how to pack to travel abroad, especially to a foreign country that is not Europe. So talking to them about all your cash, your passport, copies of your passport, your medication. All of that always goes on your person. You wanna move your money around in different parts of your suitcase, but everything needs to be with you. You never put that into your checked baggage. And like Amanda said, we didn't have any problems with that, but a lot of that was education and prep and pre-teaching leading up to it. And just in general, traveling with kids that were aware and parents who were aware of what they needed to do.
Yeah.
What will, what will be your position if the junior who went on this trip last year were to apply to go on it again?
So our thoughts were, so we have 18 spots and if the 18 spots don't fill and there's someone from last year who wants to go again, we would accept them. But we wanna have the experience for new students first. I, I'm gonna be in Guatemala for the same company over the summer and I already have some seniors from last year who like keep saying they wanna come down over the summer, which is really cool.
Clearly it affected them greatly the first time.
Yeah, for sure.
That's great. Questions, anybody? Any other comments? We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
One opposed.
Thank you.
One opposed. I'm sorry. We have three, four and one opposed. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Next up, request for approval for school budget transfers. Dr. Cron.
Okay. We have excess money in our social tech account and our Norfolk Aggie tuition account and our Norfolk Aggie transportation account because the money that was appropriated was greater than what was actually spent on tuition. And so we wanna transfer that to an account that needs it, which is the out-of-district special education tuition account to cover the unanticipated increased costs in special education tuition.
So those three accounts, motion to approve?
Motion second.
All those in favor? Aye. That is a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Personnel information. Dr. Cron.
It's that time of year where people are coming and going a little bit. We have some retirements. We have some new hires, but nothing special to report. We're excited. I will say, as I glance down, I'm excited to see Dan Kimball, a former graduate, who's been a paraprofessional and a substitute teacher now for, you know, a handful of years, finally get a, get a position as a teacher at the high school for next year. So that's always exciting to see some of our folks who have really paid their dues and who are very talented come to work for us in a different capacity, so. But other than that, I have no, nothing else to add about this. Oh, and we have one, one retirement, Diane Core, a grade seven science teacher. That's a retirement that you may or may not have been aware of.
Is she still gonna continue on the Adele Ed area?
I don't know. I don't know.
Hopefully she will.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Cron. Last year about this time, we started discussing student representation on school committee. In the past, we had had student representatives that would come periodically. Sometimes they would come, sometimes they wouldn't. We'd have different kids and it was a good experience for other kids to experience policymaking and what happens at school committee meetings and having people take part. And what we did was last year, we thought it might be a good move and I think it has proved to be a good move to have one permanent representative from the student body to be here at our meetings, both to take part in and learn from, but also contribute to. We, the student body nominated Ms. Shannon Lindahl to do that last year and Shannon has been with us at every meeting. I don't think she's missed one. For, so for a young lady that's balancing her senior year, college applications, all the great stuff that goes on in the senior year of a student's life, she's taken every other Monday night to be here with us. She's kept us filled in about everything that's going on here in Rockland High School, all the great things, all the announcements. She's had some great questions along the way and tonight is her last meeting. So I just wanted to thank Shannon. Shannon, it's been a pleasure having you at our meetings. We can see very clearly that you're a very bright and very talented young lady and you've got a bright future ahead of you. So thank you. Thank you for being a part of this. Thanks for stepping up for your class and the student body. And we can only hope that your peers in lower classes elect someone as capable as you next time around. So thanks very much.
You can always come back and visit anytime. We'll put the chair off there.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'll run for the position.
Okay, there you go. Now you're talking.
Yeah, this has been a great opportunity this year, just seeing like behind the scenes, how many things go into making the school the way it is. I wanna go into business one day, so I feel like this has like set the pathways. So like, I know for sure what goes into, there's like always behind the scenes people.
Absolutely.
And this job pays so well.
So with the busy, you know, end of the year senior activities, do you have any announcements for us or anything that you wanna highlight?
Next week, well, tomorrow's the seniors' last day of school. And so next week, we're all gonna dress up in our caps and gowns and walk through our old elementary schools and see our old teachers and all the kids. Bittersweet.
Bittersweet indeed, but we're excited for you. Congratulations and best of luck, Shannon.
You still working?
Thank you.
You still working over at Plaza?
Yeah, yeah. Hanover Mall. Working there tomorrow.
And I know your T-shirt gives it away a little bit, but why don't you tell everybody a little bit about what you're doing next year?
Oh yeah, I'm going to Emerson College next year and I'm gonna major in the business of the creative enterprises, which is a new program they created like three years ago, I think. So it really gets into like the business world and creating new ideas. And it kind of combines like entrepreneurship with all the new technologies and digital media. And like, it just combines everything that I'm interested in. So it's really exciting.
Yeah, you have to come back and share that with us.
Definitely.
We're gonna hold you to it.
Yeah.
Thanks, Shannon.
We know where you are.
Next on tonight's agenda is public service announcements. Mr. Garofalo.
Yes, Shannon, congrats and good luck. Thanks. I'm, you know, I've only been here a short time, but thanks for sticking it out for the year and being here every week. I mean, that's, that's for someone dealing with school, work, life as a teenager is, that's better than most. So that, that's fabulous. It's Memorial Day weekend, obviously, so everyone needs to be smart and safe. But we also need to remember what Memorial Day is. It's not a day for cookouts. It's a day to reflect and remember all those that we've lost that have fought for our freedom in this country. So just wanna wish everybody a happy Memorial Day. And for those of you who have lost family members, our hearts are with you.
Mr. Mills?